Good evening, welcome to the August 1st, 2018, meeting of the Gathersburg Planning Commission. Phil, Phil Vassal is going to be joining us tonight as a full commissioner since we have, we don't have all of our commissioners present, so thank you for that. What's that? First up is the approval of our minutes from two meetings. The first is June 20th, 2018, do I have a motion please?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the minutes of June 20th, 2018, as read to the record.
Second.
It's moved in the second, and all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, next one up is the, now passes unanimously. The next one up is the approval of the minutes from July 5th, 2018. Is there a motion please?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the minutes of July 5th, 2018, as read to the record.
Second.
It's moved in the second, and all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That passes unanimously, alright. So then we have tonight, two items on a consent agenda. AFP, first is AFP 7964-2018, Discovery Meadows Child Care Center Solar Canopy. And the second is AFP-7833-2018, the At Home Store Exterior Building Renovations and Minor Site Improvements. And that's an amendment to final, both are amendment to final site plans. Are there any questions on the consent agenda tonight?
No.
Alright, if not, is there a motion please?
Mr. Chair, I move we present the, or approve the consent agenda.
Second.
It's moved in the second, and all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That passes unanimously, alright. Next is sign permits, and we have one of those tonight for sign-17140-2018 and sign-1714-2018, the Boba Pop T-Bar at 312 Main Street. And this is an icon sign approval in the MXD, MX2 development zone. Presenting from staff is Jasmine Ford, good evening Jasmine.
Good evening, staff, before you present two sign perm applications for the Boba T-Bar located at 312 Main Street, which is one of the units in the live-work space units in the Kintlands. The application comes before the planning commission because the proposed sign contains an image of a leaf that's been incorporated in their lettering. And pursuant to section 24-212J of the city's sign ordinance, planning commission has to approve, review and approve icon signs. So the first sign is going to be in the front, and that's going to be approximately six square feet. And then the sign on the rear side of the building is going to be approximately six square feet. Both signs are not illuminated. There is an approved sign package for the live-work units, and the signs are in a performance with that sign package. And the KCA and the property owner has reviewed and approved, approved signage.
Any questions on the application?
Glad it's not a nail salon.
Concentrate on the, on the application, I'm sorry. We do have our roles and procedures.
That was his side, thought they came outside.
Is there anyone here in the audience that cares to comment on this? Alright, seeing no one, Jasmine with her recommendation please.
So staff recommends that the planning commission, based on the exhibits submitted, the staff report findings and recommendations grant sign-17140-2018 and sign-17141-2018 Boba T-Bar signage finding compliance with section 24-212 of the city code with no conditions.
Great, thank you. Alright, any concerns with moving this forward, or any comments on the proposal?
No.
Okay, no, alright.
Mr. Chair, I move that the planning commission, based on the exhibits submitted, the staff report findings and recommendations grant sign-17140-2018 and sign-17141-2018 Boba Pop T-Bar signage, finding in compliance with section 24-212 of the city code with no conditions.
Second.
It's been moved in the second, and all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Passes unanimously. Thanks very much Jasmine. Next up is a recommendation to the Maryland City Council for CTAM-7950-2018, zoning text amendment to amend restrictions on automotive and self-storage uses in the CBD zone. Presenting from staff is Laura Howell, good evening Laura.
Good evening.
Laura, Laura.
Hold on.
Yeah, yeah, long day, long week.
So this is the planning commission recommendation on text amendment CTAM-7950-2018. A joint public hearing for this amendment was held on July 2nd, 2018. The planning commission held its record open until 5:00 PM on July 25th, 2018, and at the time of the commission's record closing, there were 24 exhibits in the record. As discussed during the hearing, this amendment proposes to allow auto service and repair uses as special exceptions in the CBD zone outside of the Old Town District. Within the Old Town District, auto uses and self-storage facilities would be prohibited. The purpose of this amendment is to provide a path for these automotive uses to become a conforming use within the CBD zone while at the same time maintaining a vibrant commercial core in Old Town. During the public hearing, the planning commission brought up the question of auto sales and whether or not sales could be allowed as an accessory use. Planning staff spoke with the city attorney's office about this, and currently, the draft ordinance prohibits all types of sales, both as a standalone use and an accessory use. The language in the draft ordinance would need to be changed to allow sales as an accessory use. And if they were to be allowed as an accessory use to an auto repair shop, it would only apply to those vehicles that were created or modified on-site. So an auto sales lot would not be permitted. Additionally, because auto repair would be a special exception use, the Board of Appeals has the ability to limit the number of for-sale vehicles or to prohibit sales altogether based off the context of the site. So staff would not support auto sales as a standalone use, but staff is supportive of allowing them as an accessory use. In order for the Maryland Council to consider allowing sales as an accessory use, the commission would need to make that proposed change a part of their recommendation this evening.
And that wouldn't, that wouldn't affect the process of public hearings and posting that?
No, but it's not restricting uses anywhere. So another point brought up during the public hearing was self-storage facilities and whether or not they should be prohibited throughout the CBD zone and not just in the Old Town District as the amendment currently proposes. Or if they should be allowed outside the Old Town District but only as special exceptions. Staff provided a response to this in an email to commissioners on July 5th. And just to point out some of the main points from that again, in 2014, the city passed a text amendment to prohibit self-storage from the E1 Zone because these uses really do not meet the intent of an employment zone. But at the time, staff proposed expanding this prohibition to the city's floating zones. But the council explicitly allowed them by right in the CBD zone because they conform with the purposes of the CBD zone. Namely, with the purpose of having a variety of land uses to meet the needs and requirements of residents, workers, and shoppers. So with all the multifamily housing in and around Old Town, self-storage is a necessary use in the area. Staff also provided a map showing where self-storage would still be permitted with this amendment, and noted that many parcels where it's permitted, they're already approved with industrial uses or they're located next to industrial uses. And these industrial uses are allowed under the Old Town Master Plan. The multifamily development up in Sector 5, which is that northern section as you go up North Summit, staff feels this is unlikely to redevelop into self-storage because it really would not be the highest and best use for those properties. And then also, a lot of the parcels where self-storage would be permitted are really too small, they're under an acre. All the other self-storage facilities in the city are over an acre. So staff, for these reasons, really does not think there is a risk of self-storage really proliferating or spreading throughout Old Town. And then in regards to it being allowed as a special exception, usually, special exception uses really are used for uses that have negative externalities, that they can have a negative impact on surrounding properties. Because the Board of Appeals can apply conditions and additional restrictions on these uses to try to mitigate those impacts. But with self-storage, you don't really have those negative externalities. So there would not really be anything for the board to restrict in that case. So for these reasons, staff supports maintaining self-storage as a by-right use in the zone but outside of the Old Town District. The staff is recommending that the planning commission recommend adoption to the Maryland City Council of text amendment CTAM-7950-2018, with the proposed change to allow auto sales as an accessory use. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you. Questions?
When you talk about auto repair facilities, and somebody brings a car in and the car is, it's very expensive to repair. The owner of the car says, look, I don't want to deal with this, I'm giving up the car, signs the car over to the accessory unit. The accessory unit then repairs the car, doesn't modify the car, just repairs the car. Can that unit then sell that car without a special exception? I mean, that's, does that make sense?
That would be allowed as an accessory.
That would be allowed?
Yes.
Without a special exception?
As long as the, if it's an existing facility right now.
Right, so if it's a new facility that comes in for auto repair?
They would get a special exception.
They have to get a special, even if it's one car, even if it's, you know, one-off type of thing?
No, 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 they have to get a special exception for automotive uses.
Okay.
For automotive repair. So.
So currently, all sales are prohibited, even as an accessory use, if that's your question?
Yeah, so they're all prohibited?
Yes.
Currently.
Currently.
And maybe this is getting...
This is my question.
Maybe this is getting too down in the minutia, but in your hypothetical situation, they fix the car, they don't put it out with a for-sale sign on it, they don't do anything, but, you know, somebody comes in and says, hey, I'm looking for a car, and they said, I got this one, I just fixed here.
Right.
Well, you know. Technically, that would be in violation of the ordinance, correct? Or is this about, you know, parking a car on the curb or three cars by the curb with for-sale signs on it?
For-sale signs on, exactly, thank you.
Yeah, that's the intent, and the, so with a special exception, Board of Appeals can require them to predominantly display which cars are for sale, that's one way to limit the number of sales going on. So most likely, that would be a requirement of allowing the accessory use.
But I guess it sounds like it's sort of in a, in a gray area that, you know, unless somebody complains, there's nothing really to enforce because there's not cars advertised for sale, it's just a sign.
Well, keep in mind, right now, as it's presented, no sales will be allowed. If we recommend that sales as an accessory part of the business be allowed, that would still ride along with whatever the Board of Appeals reviewed for the special exception. Fair? Right? And at that point, they could impose guidelines about advertising, about, you know, I mean, I think, I think this concept of a for-sale sign on a car, it's sort of a minor thing, but i-if that was something that was a real concern, that could be restricted in and of itself as part of the special exception. But we'd have to at least get over the hump tonight of having a recommendation there to, to have, to allow accessory sales, and I'm not sure, I'm not sure we are or not, but that's what it would take at this point, is to have that back, put back in, yeah. Right?
Yes.
You've got 17 or 18 shops right now currently?
Yes, I think it's 18.
18, yeah.
But there's other things too, like automotive accessories, you know?
Absolutely.
The, the...
Tire shops.
Whatever, you know, something, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I don't have any qualms about the, you know, sales as an accessory special exception, it's more, I'm more in line with what you're thinking, that there's probably now, and probably will be, some, a fair amount of sales go on that don't take place under the banner of a, you know, come buy your car here banner. But, yeah, that'll just have to be dealt with if it becomes a problem.
My, my concern would be that there's too many for-sale parked cars in the curb, in addition to all the repairs that we're having.
But those cars wouldn't have a for-sale sign on it, they would just be lined up on the street.
Well, they're, they're not going to line up on the street for one, they're going to be within the parking area, because there's no parking along East Diamond Avenue in that area.
Yeah, but if, let's say, there's a couple of owners, there's a little bit of a grass patch, if they were to like, be allowed to have a sales, then I can envision you trying to get your merchandise and the frontage. And so that's my main concern.
That's fair. I think the other thing that can be a part of is the special exception process where if they've got the frontage and there's the danger of returning into a car lot, maybe the displays could be restricted versus, I know a lot of these are actually kind of set back, the bays themselves are set back from the roads, they don't actually have rights to the frontage, I mean, that's sort of how they're set up.
And I agree with you, but I don't think, I've seen them already, like, park their repair cars on that little strip of grass.
On the grass area, which we try to enforce every other week, yeah.
Exactly, so I, I see it as a very possible scenario where the for-sale items will just then take priority for that.
Yeah, I guess my question, then, I think that sounds like it comes down to enforcing, not enforcement, not of, not only of the grass area but also of the parking lot, because are, are they allowed to park more vehicles than they have striped spaces for in those areas?
No, no.
Okay, so.
But right now, our inspectors can only inspect from the public right of eye.
Right side, yeah.
So it's very hard to prove things.
Does the city have a grime?
And with a special exception, not even with aerials, they cannot use aerials in court. So that's part of the reasoning for the special exception, to put on a restriction that our staff will be allowed on-site every few months to, to inspect the area.
And, and that's my, my goal, to point out the, the possible cracks in the, in us moving forward with the, the additional recommendation. Because I think we have to take into consideration the fact that they, it may become a for-sale frontage.
Yeah, but it, it sounds like, right now, the already permitted, you know, grandfathered uses, there's next to no mechanism for inspect, any sort of detailed inspection and enforcement, whereas at least this would allow the avenue to put that requirement in that inspections be allowed to happen. So it's, I get your concern, but it sounded to me like this is, by allowing them, we're actually fixing the enforcement loophole as well.
Or at least providing an opportunity to, to, for additional oversight. I mean, I, you know, we don't have to recommend the accessory sales as an allowed use, it was just sort of part of the discussion, so.
I remember there was a tenant who particularly spoke on that subject, so.
Yeah, I mean, if it, the accessory sales is a special, special exception along with everything else, so it would have to be presented and, you know, the details of it would be laid out and limits put on it and enforced, so I don't have a, a problem with that, I'm not worried about, you know, this turning into a bunch of used car lots. I don't think that's going to happen. But if we got, if we've got some, you know, small businesses who are doing this sort of, you know, good work that people want and they can, you know, make a living out of it and sell some sort of unique, unique cars and sell some of the work they do, I've got no problem with it if it's done within reason.
Does accessory have a, have a quantifiable definition? Does it, does it sound something like, so, you know, the gross revenue from the business for repairs has to exceed the revenue for sales, is anything like that?
Usually, we use square footage, usually, we use like, square footage of the building devoted. But in this case, you know, if they're parking cars outside, I guess it would be square footage of the lot potentially.
Well, what if they build a showroom?
That's a different, that's very different.
No, we're trying to quantify the percentage, so, even if it's a different concept, it's still, we're trying to quantify the sales.
So my point is, if it doesn't exist now, there, there isn't a quantifiable definition of accessory in this case.
Well, accessory usually is less than 50% of the business.
Of 50% of what though?
Of a business.
Square footage.
Of the square footage, so if you're doing a showroom, that would be pretty big, and especially with those buildings, it would, it would take the whole, the whole unit area.
They're not that big.
Alright.
And it would have to be shown on this special exception, and they'd have to show us a floor plan, and, and their assigned parking and how that would work.
Which then gives us more control over the situation, being an anonymous kind of effect, and I would agree with you, and I think what Phil pointed out is really important, that it actually gives us greater control over the situation in the future than where we are right now.
It also has to be customarily subordinate and, and connected to the main business, and I'm not sure a showroom would quite, maybe individual sales, an argument could be made there, but actually building a showroom, that might have a much harder time to show that that's customary.
Oh, great point, so the product of their repair work would, could be sold because it's, it's a product what they do there, but creating the whole retail environment, the whole retail experience would be an entirely different use. Yeah, yeah, makes a lot of sense. Okay, any other concerns, questions?
Well, I, I wanted to bring up the whole thing about the self-storage. And so I, I questioned, what is the definition of negative? Is it based solely on safety? Because I think that there's quite a bit, when you look at the master plan for this area, to have a self-storage will impact, in, in my mind, it will have a very negative impact to the frontage and to the liveliness of the, of the entire district. So I, I struggle with, with the idea of leaving it out because there is not perceived as negative, when, in my definition, it is entirely negative to have such use within the central business district.
I think we've come a long way with self-storage. You'll note that the mill is pretty low-key compared to what's across the street.
Yeah, that's true.
I mean, we've, as far as the city and the planning commission, we, we had pretty specific colors and just the position of the storage so that it was, wouldn't have a negative impact, and so.
Yeah, I think that's a, that's a great point, on the physical side, but I think the, the bigger idea in some of our master plan purpose statements is something about the human experience, not, not the buildings fitting together. So the more we have storage, self-storage, which is kind of a dead activity, it's a, it's a passive, you know, quiet activity, is just square footage within that area that isn't people coming and going on the sidewalk and, you know, I mean, it's sort of that, that other side of what we're trying to get to, which is a walkable, active, activated town area. And I think there's an argument to be made that self-storage, as valuable and as appropriate as it is for a, for an area with a lot of multifamily density, doesn't contribute to the other, other objective, which is to activate the, the streetscape and the, you know, the activity of people. So I think there's a, there's a, there's a conflict, not a conflict, there's a, there's a bit of a balance that to work out. I agree with you, the work that was done on the old Williams feed, yeah, the preservation, the object for preservation, when it might not have happened, was, was nice, the asset. And, and there was always a discussion about, well, at some point, maybe it could be redeveloped into a more active use. So, you know, I agree with you, I think that's a good example of the better way to do it, but I think there's an argument to be made that ultimately, if we could get to the point where we're not promoting self-storage in lieu of, or in place of what could be a more active environment, I think that's another idea we really need to explore. The thing I worry about, as we've had this conversation, Rob, I think you helped me out with this, we really can't affect this proposed text amendment at this point with that element, is that right?
That's correct.
Yes, because you're adding a restriction, so it would have to come back as a subsequent text amendment.
Yeah.
And, and again, just, just to jump on with what the commission was just discussing, the walkable communities, please remember where these are recommended, are currently industrial areas. So, you know, to say, it's being withdrawn, Barron's Lumber, if self-storage went in there, that, you know, it's across from an I-2 property that also has self-storage. So we're not taking away residential restaurant pad sites for the potential replacement with self-storage. The master plan itself for Old Town calls for the retention of these industrial uses. It doesn't just discuss the retention of auto service, it clearly says these industrial uses, and it's at the ends of Diamond Avenue.
It's on the fringes, yeah.
Well, and while I agree with that, Rob, there, there's, I just struggle with the vision, and I agree that some areas have a, a purpose, and the, and there's the idea of remaining some of them industrial, but I think that we should not perpetuate that by enabling them to create inactive uses. And that's what, I personally believe that it's an incredibly negative addition to something that it's already, let's say, not active. And it, yeah, it perpetuates it for, let's say, 30, 40, 50 years, we don't know, I think that our, the CBD zone, it's small enough that we should, that there's plenty of areas within less than a mile that could potentially host.
I, I candidly, I would disagree, it's precluded in the CD zone, and the other zones around it are all zoned residential, it's not allowed. Old Town, while it's small, is disproportionately multifamily. The existing services, the existing self-storage that there are successful, it is used, and one, the first purpose of the CBD zone, as Laura read, is partially to serve the residents of Old Town.
And precisely that, but it has a, a very different component than that of an industrial use, or passive use. It's not, it's not to be, yeah, it, it, to me, I, I read it entirely different, I understand that it, it serves as aspect but not as a passive aspect, and maybe five miles out, you have Snowford School, that isn't, and you have all of those areas, that...
But to create a complete sustainable community, you don't drive people out of the city to get these uses.
So we don't want to debate this tonight, I have to intervene here. In all fairness, we don't have all the information we need to make a compelling argument one way or the other for this. Right now, the proposed text amendment allows it, and, you know, we either have to recommend that or not, but.
But it's, it's, it's recommending that it not be allowed in the Old Town area where there's active, where the active area of Old Town is.
I understand, but it doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't have a, to put a restriction in against self-storage in the CBD zone in addition to the Old Town component would require another round of work.
That is correct.
That we're not prepared to do tonight, that's all I'm going to get.
That's correct, yes.
I think there's some validity to the discussion, so my proposal is this, we move forward based on the merits of the discussion, the findings, the, the data we have on the current proposal, and if there's a desire on the commissioner's part to look at further restricting storage, let's do our homework and get ready for that, and maybe, maybe recommend, maybe, what I should say is recommend, that we sponsor something like that on another round in the future, when we have more information. I, I know there's some, there's some validity to this, but I just don't know that we have all the information tonight to really put the, put the case forward, so.
Well, and, and let's, let's look at what we're actually doing here, we're taking ourselves from a situation where, as I, if I'm, if I say this wrong, correct me, but where self-storage is permitted by right everywhere, Old Town, everywhere within the CBD zone, including Old Town.
Including Old Town, right.
And we're dialing that back.
Back to just the CBD.
Correct.
From what it is now. Whether, whether in long-term, we should dial it back further, or whether it's a more comprehensive master planning or zoning issue, that's valid, but it's not, you know, this is a step in the right direction, we can figure out later whether it needs to go further.
I think, and I'll editorialize, but I think one of the issues was, we first read it, at least I was like this, when I went to the public hearing, or the scene of the work session, having read through this, I, for some reason, came into the room that night with the impression it did it throughout the CBD zone, that was my error.
Yeah.
But, but it still left a little bit of a jolt that, oh, why not? And so, it, it's worth looking into, I think, but, but I don't think we have the, have the information or the, or the right structure in front of us tonight to actually put some serious debating against it. So, my proposal is, like, Phil really paraphrased this nicely, we're taking a step in the right direction, maybe we need another step, we'll have to do that with a second step or a third step, I think is fair. Does that make sense, Trudy, is it, is it alright? The, so, and then we return to then, the accessory use of sales and the automotive component of this, automotive sales component of this, or excuse me, auto repair component of this. Are you all comfortable with that as a recommendation within this, going back to the council, is that?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
I, I do want to note that I unfortunately had to miss the work session.
Public, the public hearing.
Excuse me, the public hearing, unfortunately, we were buying a car and went late. But I did watch it on, a rebroadcast of it, so I am, you know, I do feel I can, can assist and make a recommendation.
Alright, very good. Alright, so anything else?
This was a good discussion, I think it was, yeah.
So staff is recommending, we, we recommend to the Maryland Council to pass this text amendment, zoning text amendment, including the recommendation, or adding the recommendation that they include accessory sales. Sales as, as an accessory use?
Yes.
Sales as an accessory use.
As an accessory use to the, to the auto repair businesses.
Yes.
Everybody's happy with that, I think we'll move our motion then, please.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we recommend to the mayor and the city council approval of CTAM-7950-2018, with the proposed change to allow auto sales as an accessory use, finding that the proposed amendment conforms with the purpose of the CBD zone and the Old Town District master plan.
Second.
It's been moved in the second, and all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Passes unanimously, thank you very much, thank you Laura, appreciate it. The jet lag is starting to make me, I can't, I can't make sentences together now, I don't know what it is. Alright, that takes us to, from the commission, Phil, may I start with you? Nope, I don't have anything to say. Okay, Dan?
We're just, I've been finalizing the, the upcoming Maryland Planning Commission Association's conference, and it's coming together really nicely. A lot of folks here in this room being participating, and I'm urging my, my colleagues to participate as well. So I'm, I'm just going to keep beating that drum until we get there.
Very good. If you, at some point, if you want help on your, you know, activities or agendas, you know?
I have something for you. I have something for you, we'll talk later. I have something for all of you.
I hope hospitality is involved.
I just want to ask, does anybody know about the MPCA? I just wanted to ask, does anybody know about the MPCA training that's going to be in Ocean City? And how does that work? Is that part of?
No, that's separate, that's something they're sponsoring, but, and, and we're talking about working with them more.
Okay, is there anything that we should be aware, that we should perhaps?
Well, everybody needs to have their training completed, they were supposed to have it done within six months after their appointment, so if you haven't done that, you need to do it.
It's an opportunity.
Okay.
And we're going to have training on, in October as well.
Okay.
Or you can do it online.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
All right, who's Ali?
Oh, I just want to remind everyone that we have the upcoming 5K, and it's the twenty-fifth anniversary of the race.
Wow.
We're really excited. We have a commemorative t-shirt, and we have other exciting.
Is your whole family with you?
No, we're, we're all too little yet.
Oh, okay.
But I, just, if you haven't signed up, please do. It's a really fun run walk, and it's a very special year, so we're looking to be very intentional about celebrating that milestone. What's, what's the date of it? September 1st.
It's always Labor Day weekend.
Yeah.
But it's Saturday.
Saturday, Labor Day weekend, yeah.
And you can sign up at kentlands.org.
All right, great, is that it? Thank you, thank you, thank you. From staff, where do we want to go first?
I guess I can go first.
Okay.
We have two joint public hearings coming up, I believe Maryam sent you emails on those polling on availability. The first one's August 20th, which is for a new city park next to the Menneamun campus. And then the second one is September 17th, which is the SDP for 700 Queen's Orchard, for the first phase of that SDP.
And the next meeting is, our next meeting is September?
September 5th, yes, we have one meeting in August.
Oh. By September 5th, we'll all be sore from the 5K. I'll be hobbling in. All right, that's all, that's, okay, Trudy?
I would like to announce that work on the Kentlands Boulevard crosswalks is to start on August the 13th, dependent on the weather, of course.
Oh, wow.
And it should last about six weeks, dependent on the weather. We're still trying to resurface tennis courts that were supposed to be done in May, so.
Trudy, is this just resurfacing, or is this also with additional signage and additional warnings and things like that?
This is, I believe, to repair the crosswalk.
Just to repair the crosswalk, so nothing in addition to?
No.
That's disappointing.
The cross, not even the light, the pedestrian crossing light?
This is all the information that was sent to me.
Can, can you find out for our next meeting, whether in addition to, because I know we had this discussion, and we had labored over this for years now, in addition to just making the crosswalks visible?
I think initially, it was clumped together as the crosswalks and the pedestrian.
Signage and things like that, lighting.
You might, you might have recalled that they stopped making those pedestrian lighting things, we got something from, was it Mr. Hill? There's a gentleman that came.
But I, I don't know.
Hall, Hall, sorry.
The, yeah, I don't know if it was warning lights or just general illumination at night because.
Yeah.
There was a lot of things discussed. You know, at some point, it was, there was also going to be a Phase 2 or 3 or 5 when, when there was more, more study and more, deeper look at how the circulation and traffic worked through there.
I think we were looking at all the roundabouts in the city.
Yeah, yeah. That might be worth just checking in and seeing what, how much energy is behind that, if anything, at this point, because I know the recommendations came back, right, from?
Yeah, and the, one of the recommendations was that, in the inside of the, of the median, that it will be shortened from two lanes to one lane, just in a portion where people are not passing each other. I, I hope I'm not complicating anybody's mind, but it, it was a way to.
Well, there was some restructuring of the roundabouts, that, that was the larger issue to kind of calm traffic, but, and I don't know where all that stands, but.
But I, I really thought that was part of the Phase 1, actually, because it was just a matter of putting the, the little.
Well, it depends on how public works.
Yeah, it, it just, yeah, whatever, whatever comes up would be helpful, appreciate it.
Actually, you know, is this just under the, under the sort of ongoing capital improvement work, it's not a, a big initiative or anything like that, but.
Well, there's, the way that the city's doing CIPs, there's usually five years before a first schedule as to how a CIP is scheduled to bring it about in a five-year period, so.
Okay, I'll wait, wait to hear from you, that's great. Thanks.
Well, I, I, something I forgot, I was trying down 355, and it looks like they're doing that significant work in the Memorial Gardens, it's right in the middle of the wall. Yeah, it's, it looks like it's really coming together.
Yeah.
That's going to be really nice.
Yeah, we approved that about three years ago.
That's a project that the city's doing with the permission of the, the Board of the Cemetery.
Right, right, that's, it looks like, I'm happy to see, I'm happy to see, yeah, it's been a while, three years ago. And I was like, when is that going to happen? And then it just started, so I'm really happy to see that, looking forward to getting that done.
Great.
Yeah.
All right, anything else? Frank, you look like you're going to jump in there.
I can say as part of the Planning Commission conference here, I guess on that Friday, October 26th, we are scheduled to do an open meetings training as well.
Oh, that just moved to Thursday, and I haven't had a chance to talk to you about it.
That was on a closed meeting, they discussed that in a closed meeting.
Actually, Tom, I need to, yeah, I need to go back to vacation to ask if that's going to be a problem. That got moved to Thursday today, we had a meeting.
Just let him, just make sure.
I'll let him know.
Because he's the coordinator.
Yeah, right, he's been very, very, very accommodating.
I, I don't anticipate an issue.
Okay.
Except that there has to be a, they usually want to have two trainers.
He, he named another gentleman.
Yes, John Mathias.
Right, right.
I think he will work that out.
Yeah, okay, but I just, since you brought it up.
Okay.
It moved to Thursday.
Good to know.
Anything else? All right, if that's it, have a good evening, we're adjourned.